Uh, Planning Commission Meeting of Monday, January tenth, two thousand twenty-two. And, uh, Jimbo, if you could, uh, lead us in the, uh, Pledge of Allegiance, please. I think you were on mute, but.
Oh, I, I just muted it. I did that whole, like, should I do it again?
Uh, sure, just for the record, please.
Right, a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, or which is thanks. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, much better. Thank you, Jimbo. Uh, okay, Jackie, could, if you could, uh, run through the roll call?
Chair Clowitter.
I'm here.
Chair, Vice Chair Liu.
Here.
Commissioner Juarez.
Here.
Commissioner Mamda Perkar.
Here.
And Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Okay, tonight's meeting is live streamed on Cable Channel Three and on the San Gabriel online platforms. Uh, if you have a public comment, please email to PC dash publiccomment@sgch.org. No later than the time that the item is to be considered by the Planning Commission tonight. Comments received after items have been considered will not be read into the record. Speaking of which, comments will be, uh, read in by, um, our executive assistant Jackie Wong. And we'd like to put a three-minute time limit on those. And, uh, the agenda items will also be introduced by, uh, Jackie Wong. Okay, and to prevent any overlaps in comments, each commissioner will be called upon to speak. I don't think we have a problem with that. Uh, okay, and the public comment, um, period is the time set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda tonight, but are within the subject matter of the jurisdiction of our commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Planning Commission cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. Uh, Jackie, do we have any public comment that's been sent in?
We did not receive any public comment for this portion, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have one item on the consent calendar, and that is the prior minutes to the, oh, the last meeting of December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And, uh, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? And do we have any comments or a motion to approve?
Chair, since I was not at the meeting, I'm gonna stay in from the minutes.
Okay, that's fine. Any other comments? If not, I'll, uh, go ahead.
Chair, I move to approve the minute, meeting minutes from December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, Jimbo, thank you. Jackie?
Okay, um, we're, the vote, uh, Chairman Clowitter?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Juarez?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chair Liu?
Yes.
And Commissioner Mamda Perkar?
Yes.
Okay, the vote passes to four, uh, yes, one abstention, uh, and the motion, uh, passed.
Great, thank you, Jackie. Okay, um, Planning Manager Samantha Tewasart, uh, is going to help us out here with the public hearing, uh, directions.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Uh, good evening. Thank you for participating and tuning into tonight's Planning Commission meeting. My name is Samantha Tewasart, Planning Manager with the Community Development Department. There are three public hearing items to be considered by the Planning Commission tonight. Copies of the agenda and the staff report for tonight's hearing are available on the city's website at www.sangabrielcity.com. If you wish to comment on any of the items, please email the public comments to PC-dash-publiccomment@sgch.org. No later than the time the item is considered by the Planning Commission tonight. Comments received after the item has been, uh, considered will not be read into the record. For the items tonight, staff will provide a summary of the staff report, followed by any clarifying questions from the commission. Then the public hearing will be open, and the recording secretary will begin reading aloud the public comments that have been received during the hearing. Each comment will be read for up to three minutes. Prior to the close of the public hearing, the Planning Commission may ask additional questions of staff. However, once the public hearing is closed, the opportunity for public comment has ended. Once the public hearing portion is closed, the item will move into commission deliberation. And Chairman, at this time, staff is ready to present item, uh, three A.
Okay, very good. Um, and that will be, Sam, are you doing that?
I guess, Chairman.
Okay, uh, you have the floor. Um, uh, hold on, let's see, we've got, um, our first item is the housing element update for the sixth cycle, uh, which covers the years twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine. And, uh, Samantha, if you could take us through that, thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you, Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. The presentation from staff this evening will be relatively brief. The city's housing consultants, uh, Lisa Wise Consulting, Inc., LWC, will be providing a more detailed presentation of the proposed housing element update following staff's presentation. Um, if we can go to slide number two, please. Some, uh, key dates that staff would generally, uh, like to mention would be, uh, January of two thousand twenty-one, when the city retained the services of LWC to present, uh, to prepare the housing element update. And it was also the kickoff to the project, uh, followed by early public outreach in the first half of two thousand twenty-one. And during this time, LWC worked on reviewing existing city documents as well as co- collecting city data, and much of which are summarized in Appendix A of the, uh, Proposed Housing Element. Then the drafting of the housing element immediately followed in the second half of two thousand twenty-one. And additionally, a joint study session was held with the Planning Commission and City Council at that time as well. Uh, slide number three. Uh, the item before the Planning Commission this evening is the two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-nine six-cycle housing element update. The current housing element covers the fifth, uh, cycle planning period between, uh, two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty-one. And, uh, according to state housing laws, um, general plans, the cities and counties, um, are required to have general plans that include a housing element, uh, which must be updated periodically. And as mentioned, LWC will be going over the various components and sections of the proposed housing element, including an overview of the process, outreach efforts, needs and conditions, assessment, key programs, and recommendations. Uh, slide number four, please. Uh, so, public notification of this meeting was provided in the San Gabriel Sun newspaper and also posted, um, at City Hall, as well as the Post Office, Library, and also the dedicated webpage that was, um, created on the city's website specifically for this housing element project. Uh, slide number five. And so the recommendation before the Planning Commission this evening is to adopt the attached resolution recommending approval of the proposed initial study, negative declaration, and adoption of the two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-nine housing element update to the City Council. Uh, the housing element is currently under a second review with the State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD. Um, and, and a call with HCD is, uh, anticipated within the next couple of weeks. Uh, then City Council, um, meeting is, uh, tentatively scheduled, uh, for February, uh, in the upcoming month. Um, so as mentioned on the call this evening is Jennifer Marillo on behalf of LWC. And Jennifer will, uh, is ready to provide, uh, the Planning Commission with a more detailed presentation, um, of the contents of the proposed two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-nine housing element. And this concludes, uh, staff's presentation.
Great, thank you so much, Samantha. Good evening, everyone. Good to see some familiar faces. Um, yeah, once again, I'm Jen Marillo with LWC and happy to be helping the city out with the housing element update. Next slide. So we'll be going over, um, an overview of the housing element. But we'll focus, uh, primarily on the revised draft housing element itself, talking about the proposed programs and some of the changes, excuse me, since you've seen it last. Next slide. Um, so first, a brief overview. The housing element, as Samantha mentioned, is one of the required elements in the city's general plan. It is required to be updated every eight years, and it is unique, and then it must be certified by the state. So that's why we are undergoing review with the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. And by law, the housing element must, must address certain things, um, looking at, uh, needs assessment, identifying how the city can accommodate its fair share of housing. Um, we'll talk about that a little bit more specifically, and then set, um, citywide housing goals, policies, and programs as a housing action plan. Next slide. Um, some of the specific components are primarily documented in appendices to the housing elements. Those include an existing, uh, programs review of what's in your existing housing element, the housing needs assessment, an assessment of housing constraints to the development of housing, a site's inventory, which looks at each parcel that is suitable to accommodate housing at a specific affordability level, an identification of available resources to support housing, and then the implementation plan, um, which identifies your programs the city will implement over the next eight years. Next slide. The state has passed and continues to pass a significant amount of new housing legislation. Many of those bills are relevant to housing elements. And just in, in this cycle, we were already dealing with a lot of, uh, more stringent requirements related to how we identify housing sites, an expanded, uh, set of requirements for addressing fair housing issues, and also additional penalties, um, for housing element non-compliance. Uh, furthermore, uh, just this fall, the state adopted new bills, um, actually two weeks before this housing element was originally due, um, that did change review time periods for housing elements as well as penalties. Specifically, if the city does not have an adopted housing element found in compliance with state requirements by February eleventh, the city only has until October fifteenth to rezone parcels necessary uh, to provide sufficient housing capacity. So while that sounds a little scary, um, every SCAG jurisdiction essentially, um, will not be able to avoid that penalty. So San Gabriel is not unique. This is something that is, um, being experienced by all jurisdictions in the SCAG region. Um, next slide, please. Um, so now I'll talk a little bit about process and outreach. Um, so Samantha did walk us through the process, which started about a year ago. Um, we did hold public meetings to obtain input, um, and had a draft housing element released in August. Um, during that time, we had a public review, as well as the state, HCD, reviewing our draft. Based, based on comments we received, not only from the state, but also from the public, um, stakeholders, commissioners, council members. Uh, we did make revisions to the housing element, and that was released, um, in November and also resubmitted to the state for review. So as Samantha also mentioned, we are waiting from HCD to hear about their status of review, but are moving forward with hearings at this time with, uh, targeting council hearing on February first. Next slide. Um, in terms of public outreach, there is a housing element update webpage on the city's website, uh, dedicated to this project. Um, multiple public meetings, um, these were held virtually due to, um, COVID-related, uh, public health restrictions. And we also made direct contact with housing stakeholders, um, nonprofit organizations and community groups to also, uh, get their input, uh, directly, and did put out letters in both, um, uh, information in both Spanish and Chinese to, uh, solicit feedback. Uh, next slide, please. So I'll briefly touch on a few housing conditions and needs. We, we have talked about these at a couple of meetings, so I'm not gonna go into them in too much depth, but talk about some of the information related to fair housing, as we haven't talked about that, um, as in depth. So, uh, San Gabriel, uh, overall just has a lower median income compared to the county. We do have, um, looking at about, at over half of households in the city earning, um, less than eighty percent of the area median income, um, categorizing them as lower income. And, uh, San Gabriel is also a majority renter city, so renters at over fifty-five percent. We look at specifically, is there more vulnerable, um, compared to homeowners due to, uh, rent increases, not building well through a home asset? Next slide. And then, being housing cost burdened, uh, means that a household is paying more than thirty percent of their income towards housing costs. And in San Gabriel, um, almost six out of ten renters spend over that, over thirty percent of their income, um, on rent. Um, and about a third of renters are severely cost burdened, spending more than half of their income on housing. Um, so overpayment being a big, big issue in the city. Next slide. Um, so as I mentioned earlier, the state did issue new requirements for the assessment of fair housing for, um, housing elements in this cycle. So we were already underway with our housing element works, work when this guidance was released. So, uh, some of the information, um, you have in your pocket, I'll just highlight a few points here, as it did result in some new programs that we didn't talk about before. So this analysis looks spatially at race, access to opportunity, and those disproportionately impacted by fair housing issues. Um, the map on the left here shows the percentage of non-white population by census block group. So while San Gabriel's o- over eighty percent minority, largely Asian, the northwest portion of the city has a higher concert, concentration of white population, um, with minority percentages below eighty percent. And the map on the right shows access to opportunity as defined by the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee, or TCAP, which is used for ranking applications for low-income housing tax credits to further fair housing goals. Um, so when we talk, when they talk about opportunity areas, those are, are described by level of resource. Highest resource examples being things like high employment rates, low poverty rates, proximity to jobs, high educational proficiency, limited exposure to environmental health hazards, those types of things. So San Gabriel is largely within highest and high resource areas. Uh, with the highest resource areas located, um, north of Las Tunas and west of San Gabriel Boulevard, so that northwest, uh, corner of the city. Um, those are also the areas with, um, a higher proportion of white population. Um, the moderate resource areas, um, are in the south end of the city, and that's the lowest category that appears in San Gabriel. Um, and that area is along, along the ten and southeast of Las Tunas and San Gabriel Boulevard. Next slide. So we talked about, or I mentioned, overpayment, um, overpayment or cost burden by renters and owners is an issue, um, across the city. This is a, uh, this is common across Los Angeles County, um, but, you know, it is something that we are seeing across the board in San Gabriel. The map on the left looks at renters, the map on the right, homeowners. Um, you do see, um, overpayment in both, both tenure, tenures, but, um, the, the, uh, census tract we see with the, um, highest burden of both renters and owners is that, uh, portion at the south end of the city along the ten. Next slide. And Fair Housing also looks at, uh, residents that are at risk of displacement. Um, this, this data provided by, uh, the state actually is sourced from UC Berkeley Displacement Project and looks at, at, uh, communities that are, uh, sensitive or vulnerable, uh, to displacement based on various data points, including, um, share of low-income residents and, and other factors, sure, renters, minorities, things like that. So, um, what we do see is that a, a large portion of the city is at risk or considered by these factors to be at risk of displacement or considered to be vulnerable. Um, that's the map on the right side. Um, so the northwest portion of the city considered, not meeting those factors and being considered vulnerable, but the rest of the city being considered, um, at risk, which is, um, composed of those areas that have higher concentrations of lower and moderate income households, uh, which is shown on the map on the left. Um, so we have some new programs in response to some of this analysis, and I will talk about that shortly. Next slide, please. Um, the regional housing needs allocation is a big part of the housing element. We've talked about this before. This is the target number of units at specific affordability levels that each jurisdiction in the state must plan for in their housing element. The city's RENA is just over three thousand units, broken into different income categories. And, uh, the city is not responsible to build this number of units, but rather provide capacity for these units through zoning and removing governmental constraints that may impede their production. Next slide. Thank you. Um, and so now I just wanted to get into the housing element itself. So the draft housing element, um, released in August, um, had revisions incorporated that you have before you tonight based on public comments from residents, housing stakeholders, nonprofit community organizations, commission, and council. It also has revisions based on the affirmatively furthering fair housing analysis, and then, of course, also from comments we've received from HCD. Next slide. The housing element is organized, um, in the same fashion as, um, you've seen before. Uh, the main body has a summary of needs and resources, and then dives into the housing plan, which is organized around five goals, uh, with policies and programs nested below those. Um, the supporting appendices are the technical documentation, uh, that, um, su- supports the analysis and recommendations for those programs. Next slide. Okay, so in response to the, um, regional housing needs allocation, the RENA that we need to document that the city has capacity for, we looked at the city's existing, um, zoning, as well as trends for accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and the projects in the pipeline. So these are the same three methods we've talked about before, as showing the city's capacity to accommodate RENA. And there have been some changes, uh, particularly based on HCD comments, but also based on some public comments as well. Um, the projected ADUs were, um, ratcheted back based on some comments from HCD, um, to be more conservative. Um, there are entitled and proposed projects. I think those, uh, remained, uh, unchanged from what you've seen before. And then the site's inventory, uh, that reflects vacant and underutilized land that allows for residential. And we have made some modifications based on sites that have been included in the inventory based on HCD comments, as well as making some revisions in terms of number of units projected for certain sites based on feedback we heard publicly. Uh, what that results in is that we do have a, a larger shortfall in the lower, lower income category than we talked out about before. Uh, but again, we have a rezoning program to address that, considering the surplus we're showing in the moderate and above moderate categories. Next slide. So we have looked at potential, um, sites for rezoning. So sites that have been included in the moderate and above moderate categories that meet the, uh, meet certain requirements for lower income sites, mainly the half-acre requirement that the state, uh, does impose. And with the potential rezoning sites that have been identified, the city would have sufficient capacity for their RENA, uh, again, with the largest surplus still in that moderate income category. Next slide. Um, so this is the map of the northern portion of the city identifying, uh, sites. We do have the same symbology. We've got green as you're above moderate, uh, tan for moderate, and blue for lower income sites. You will now seize, um, the hatching. Uh, those are identifying potential sites for rezoning, meaning that the allowed density would be increased, um, or could be increased to meet HCD's requirements of being able to re-categorize those sites into the lower income category. Um, we do see sites primarily along, um, along corridors, in this case, in some, in Mission District, specific plan. Um, next slide, please. Uh, similar, similarly, here is the map for the southern portion of the city. Um, again, uh, primarily along Valley Boulevard. Um, and that's where, where you will see some more of the, uh, lower income sites, as we do see higher densities in, in that area. Um, next slide. Okay, so a few of the, um, or a handful of the key programs we wanted to walk through and talk about a few changes from the last time you saw this. Uh, the first program to focus on is the, the rezon program. This is accommodating, uh, or addressing the shortfall of the, the six hundred lower income units through a rezoning, um, where we have about twenty acres, uh, that we would rezone to a minimum of thirty units per acre, maximum of forty units per acre, uh, to accommodate, uh, that lower income shortfall. Um, the, those sites are, are primarily located within C-one and C-three zones. The current maximum density in, in those areas is, uh, twenty-five units per acre. The accessory dwelling unit program, uh, is proposed to promote the allowance for ADUs, uh, consistent with the city's state, uh, or, ordinance compliant with current state law, um, publishing the ADU guidebook in multiple languages, um, but also promoting available funds, um, CALHFA, um, funding for pre-development, uh, costs for ADUs and others as, as they become available. Uh, what it does require is monitoring ADU production, um, is the requirement of HCD to make sure that if we aren't achieving the projected ADU numbers, I think we have, uh, averaging twenty-six permitted a year. Um, if those targets aren't being met, the city does take additional action to, um, increase ADU production. Um, infrastructure grants, um, here to, um, apply for those to help facilitate infill housing. Uh, and specifically here, now prioritizing grants that serve properties south of Las Tunas Drive, um, where we have, uh, lower access to opportunities and more lower income households to help with, uh, reinvestment in the southern portion. to help with reinvestment in the southern portion of the city. Next slide. Based on, based on comments, we did add a program to evaluate and update the Mission District specific plan to encourage redevelopment in that area, including housing. An enhanced density bonus ordinance is included. So looking at options and evaluating the potential for going above the state requirement that does currently now allow for up to a 50% density bonus, depending on the amount of affordable units provided in a project. And the inclusionary housing program, which would be based on a financial feasibility analysis that also reflects density bonus considerations. So that would be more or less packaged together for city consideration. There weren't any changes to those programs, but we did have public comments supporting those. Just wanted to mention those again. Next slide. Based on input, we have a new program for low income household ownership opportunities for the city to partner with affordable housing developers or nonprofits to facilitate the production of low income for sale units. The standardized maximum heights program was in previously. This is looking at allowing the same height limit, the five stories 70 feet for mixed use projects, as well as 100% commercial projects in the C1 and C3 zones. And in line with that is the next program, which is eliminating the residential floor area limit in those zones. So hand in hand with allowing the additional height for mixed use projects that you don't limit mixed use projects to only 50% of the maximum lot area. So providing just more opportunities for housing. Next slide. These, these programs remained, I believe, unchanged, but had some support and just data to support these. So I just wanted to highlight them again. The program to address conversions of apartments to condominiums, since we do have a majority renter city providing some maybe more naturally occurring affordable housing. So for the city to adopt an ordinance that identifies requirements for how and when apartments can be converted to condominiums would be important. And then the anti-displacement information dissemination was highlighted by members of the public as something that was really positive. And we did expand that to make sure we utilize local, local groups and multilegal material to effectively reach target groups. Next slide. Okay, and then lastly, a few of the new programs specifically generated from the Fair Housing analysis includes prioritizing parks, future parks and open space improvements in lower opportunity areas in the southern portion of the city. Targeting housing development in the highest resource areas in the northwest portion of the city. So where we have housing sites identified north of Las Tunas and west of San Gabriel Boulevard that, that the city takes effort to encourage and promote realizing housing on those sites. And then lastly, working with the Human Equity Access and Relations Commission to gather information, do outreach on environmental and health factors impacting residents in the southern portion of the city and help develop an action plan to determine best, best methods to address critical issues that those residents are facing related to environmental health. Next slide. Samantha mentioned that the negative declaration is part of your, your action tonight or consideration tonight. A negative declaration was prepared for this housing element. It's a policy level review. No mitigation measures are required. And subsequent sequel analysis will be conducted and required for rezoning of sites. So when we talk about that rezoning program, the details of that and the sequel analysis for that would be subsequent to this housing element. Next slide. Samantha identified the recommendation. This is a recommendation to council to adopt the negative declaration and the 2021 to 2029 housing element. And next slide. So as we mentioned earlier, we are waiting to hear from HCD on their comments from the second review. We expect to hear from them this, this month, hopefully sooner rather than later. But we, we don't probably expect to receive a formal letter until, you know, around February 10th potentially. The state has been incredibly impacted by all of this gag jurisdictions that are in the exact same situation that San Gabriel is in with multiple submittals to the state that they're reviewing and changing requirements during the housing element period. So HCD is reacting to that as well as we have to react to that as well. So it has been difficult for all, all parties to keep up. Next steps then, of course, we, the city would make any necessary revisions for state certification. So based on HCD review, but the city is targeting the council hearing on February 1st. We, we do expect comments from HCD that require additional revisions to the housing element. That has been the case for almost every single SCAG jurisdiction this cycle because of the complications and changing requirements. Of course, you know, this poses challenges with our February 11th deadline and these public hearings, but we will know more when HCD offers us insight into their review to help us assess next steps. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time. We look forward to your questions and comments.
Okay, Jen, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any comments that we would like to make or expanding on any of these ideas? Jingbo, you want to take a shot at it?
I just to make my own comments to the housing elements. I, I just haven't spoke to a friend yesterday regarding this affordable housing issues. Every city is facing so far my comments to, to a city like a, a smaller city. I, I always say, you know, the affordable housing or whether it's for rentals or for ownership, doesn't mean the quality and merits of the living conditions. It's, it's lower than the, 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 the market, market houses. So I, I, and this is not a, a, to lower the living standard for a group of people. So I, I, I just wish that's, that's the case. When we focus on the affordable housing, increasing the affordability of the housing stock, but now reducing the, the quality of the people living in this house and to the neighbors or neighboring to this, those houses. And now, now generating the contrast between the regular, not the standard or a, a market housing versus the, the affordable housing. But it's my, I just recently, I, I was having that conversation with some colleagues friends regarding this. I don't have any, any comments to the, to the, the, this report. I think I, we have heard enough of that. I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, thanks, Jingbo. Jerry?
Yeah, I, I went through, obviously went through all the, the attachments and the, the plan and thought it made a lot of sense. I think the process to make the changes is going to be slow. And a lot of responsibility falls on the community development direct department for a lot of the changes that need to be made and revisions and applications for different things. So I'm concerned that the department's going to be impacted by a lot of this, a lot of these requirements. But as a plan, I think it's, I think it works for us. And again, it's going to be some, there's going to be some challenges in the implementation. But I, I think it, I think it works pretty well.
Okay, thanks, Jerry. Any other comments or questions for Jen or staff? Anybody before we open it up for, for community comment?
Mr. President, we're, we're going to build my comments out for the public portion, correct?
Yeah, this is, this is clarifying comments for, to the report. Yeah, we'll have another chance.
Okay.
Good? Okay. And argue, you okay? Okay. Jackie, do we have any, any public comment?
Yes, we do have one. And it's five pages. So I'm going to time myself for three minutes to read part of the comment.
Okay, read, read fast.
Okay. This came from the office of Mitchell M. Syte, located at 139 South Hudson Avenue, Suite 200 in Pasadena. And it says here, Dear Honorable Planning Commissioners and Samantha Tewasser, on behalf of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, my office is submitting these comments on City of San Gabriel's January 10, 2022 City Planning Commission meeting on the draft 2021 to 2029 update to the city's general plan housing element. The Southwest Carpenters is a labor union representing more than 50,000 union carpenters in six states and has a strong interest in well-ordered land use planning and addressing the environmental impacts of development projects. Individual members of the Southwest Carpenters live, work and recreate in the city and surrounding communities and would be directly affected by the project's environmental impacts. SWRCC expressly reserve the right to supplement these comments at or prior to hearings of the project and at any later hearings, the proceedings related to the project. SWRCC expressly reserve the right to supplement these comments at or prior to hearings of the project and at any later hearings and proceedings related to this project. SWRCC incorporate by reference all comments raising issues regarding the EIR submitted prior to certification of the EIR for the project. And finding that any party who has objected to the project's environmental documentation may assert any issue timely raised by other parties. Moreover, SWRCC requests that the lead agency provide notice for any and all notices referring or related to the project issued under the California Environmental Quality Act, Public Resources Code and the California Planning and Zoning Law. California Public Resources Code sections 21092 and 216, 21167 and government section, code section 65092 require agencies to mail such notices to any person who has filed a written request for them with a clerk of the agency's governing body. The city should require housing projects developed pursuant to the final housing element update to provide additional community benefits, such as requiring local hire and use of a skilled and trained workforce to build such projects. That's my three minute mark.
Thank you, Jackie. I believe the public commenter had a, a lengthy response that was part of the package. Sam, can, can you confirm that? Was that the same, same group?
Yes, Chairman and members of the commission, that is the same group. Staff did receive, receive their multiple page comment for the record.
Okay, very good. And so we did have an opportunity to review the, the, the whole, the whole comment as opposed to just the, the first three minutes of it. It was part of our package. Okay, Jackie, do we have anybody else? Any, any other?
That was the only one here.
Okay, very good. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the, the public hearing then and open this up for commissioner discussion. And I'm going to, I'll start here. And first of all, I want to commend Jen and, and your group and also the, the city staff for really, you know, first of all, staying on top of this thing. And then also it is a moving target. I mean, the changes that we have seen over the last year since we've been, you know, having hearings on this have been, been pretty, pretty amazing. And, and, you know, just with some of the Senate bills that have come up in the last month and a half, you know, it, it just turned everything upside down. So, you know, I, I just want to commend you for, for the work that you've done and, and just staying on top of this thing because not, not, not an easy feat. As far as the content of the report, you know, I think, you know, we're, we're in a, we're in a very mature city here and trying to carve out opportunities for, you know, what, what we're really looking at is, is large scale development. It, it, it creates a, a real a conundrum dealing with our community. You know, how many times have we had hearings here where people would, you know, line up and, and, and wonder what we're doing? You know, approving multi-unit mixed use developments that have, you know, if you look at the reports and, and, and the, the housing element, you know, it's, it's answering the state's requirements as far as, you know, what, how, how can we increase density and, and housing in the city? You know, but we're an infill city and that, that is, that is very difficult. So we as commissioners have a very difficult task in trying to balance all that. And, you know, try to, try to, to approve the smart developments and, and maybe dial down some of the stuff that's, that's maybe a little bit too, too, too ambitious. So anyway, but this gives us, this gives us a good guideline to do that. Couple of things that I, I was encouraged about. And, and I think that the Mission District specific plan could definitely use a, a refresh. You know, the market has changed so much since that was, was done back in 2004. Then, and it's, it's, it's really in, in, in need of, of, of some editing and, and addition. So anyway, I, I was encouraged to see that. Anyway, I, I, you know, we, we have a duty to do here. And, you know, like I said, it's, it's, it hasn't been easy, but it looks like we may come in just, just under the, under the time constraints. You know, as, as far as, as being able to recommend this to the city council. Jingbo, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, I, no, I, I think you said pretty eloquently. And I just stated previously too, so no more for the comments on it.
Okay, thank you. Jerry, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Not really. I, I agree with you about the Mission District specific plan. I think that's a really important point. And also, as you said, the challenges we have as, as a built out city to find. as it is a built-out city to find the capacity to add three thousand, potentially add three thousand units is uh is a huge challenge. Um, and uh I think uh it's been addressed as well as it could be in these, in, in, in the, in the plan.
Okay, thanks Jerry. Anub?
I agree. Agree with the, the rest of my commission and full commissioners. Um, I appreciate uh LWC's uh analysis of our city means providing a, you know, a bit of a rundown of where, where our information that, you know, is very valuable for, you know, as we try to work towards these housing goals, you know? Also identifying a lot of the commercial and manufacturing zones and trying to see how those can be beneficial to becoming housing locations. Unfortunately, I think at some point, we're gonna run out of tricks to be able to, you know, uh rezone or uh enlarge the high capacity of locations, you know, at some point, but for now, we're, we're really trying hard to, you know, meet the state's requirements and, you know? Uh, also at the same time, keep our character of our city moving forward. So again, I appreciate staffs and uh LWC's uh input and trying to move this forward to, to, you know, the next housing cycle.
Okay, well said. Thanks Anub. Mark? Some words of wisdom, please.
I'm sorry, what?
Some words of wisdom, please.
We'll see, we'll see how, how that turns out. Um, I, I, I'll say essentially, I agree with the comments in that, you know, it's a moving target and it's, you know, with COVID, this would be difficult even without COVID going on, right? And but now we've got, we've got that and all the the side effects of that and so forth. And um so I, I, I do uh, that point is very well taken. Um, so my comments are mostly some details um that I have and I hope you'll um indulge me here. I try to keep it to a minimum. Um, and I bookmarked the document here, so there are just a couple of things, but there is one that I consider very serious. And I will leave with that. Um, that way, you know, we could hopefully, hopefully it won't take that long. Um, then council may need to provide some guidance on this and perhaps staff. Um, um. Now, now I just blanked on the name of it. The safe parking, there we go. Safe parking. If I understand correctly, is still in this um council or Ms. Maria. Um, is there a reason for that? Are we compelled to include this? And if you, your answer is yes, I would like you to reconcile that with Assembly Bill AB eight ninety-one. Um, which basically says we, we're not compelled, if I read it correctly. Safe parking, before you answer, please, for, for commissioners, is the one where we provide parking lots, overnight parking for homeless people who still have their cars, okay? Um, I, I'm a state-registered family therapist, okay? And I've had homeless clients. It's one thing to have a homeless client in my, in my office and do therapy with them. It's another thing to congregate them en masse with twenty-five to thirty-three percent mental illness rates amongst those groups and twenty-five to thirty-three percent substance abuse rates. So my concern is who of any of us would want one of these facilities next to your home or within a block or two of your home or your children's schools? Okay, so if we're not compelled by law mandated to have these as acceptable in our general plan, we should, in my opinion, we should eliminate it so that they are not acceptable and we do not have to contend with these. So now my question would be to Ms. Maria and, and perhaps council, what? Why is that still in there?
Thank you, Commissioner Juarez. Um, Samantha, should I proceed? Okay. Um, so HCD does not require, state law does not require that you have a safe parking program.
Okay.
HCD uh, HCD does require that the city have programs that specifically target extremely low-income households. So we have to ensure that there are, there is an, or are programs that do address that lowest-income household group. One of the reasons that the safe parking program remained in was that we, we did receive comments. We did receive comments on both ends of the spectrum. Some in support of safe parking, some not in support of safe parking. The state requires that we respond and um address comments received in the development of the housing element. So if we, if we get additional feedback that safe parking is, is not the appropriate program to address the extremely low-income households, that's fine. We would just have to find a program in lieu of that to ensure that a household group is addressed.
Okay, that makes sense. That makes, certainly makes perfect sense. Um, because the bill originally, there, I believe there was a mandate and then the legislature repealed it because of communities like ours, that, that it's just beyond the scale. It is now mandated for municipalities in excess of three hundred and thirty thousand people. I, I think we're a little bit short of that. Um, I don't know. Um, so yeah, okay. Uh, thank you, thank you. I, I don't know if council has anything to add, but that, that uh answers my question.
Um, the only question that I, I would ask as a follow-up is um what alternative programs um were considered to meet the legal requirements? If, if this is where we landed, what were the alternative programs that we explored and decided against? That's for Ms. Maria.
You simply have to address, if I understood correctly, the, the very low income in some way.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so um, okay, so that, thank you, that addresses that issue. And I'll try quick on these other things I wanna point out. Um. Um, I, just comments, I guess. I think it is not in our city's interest to make changes in our code or our zoning that exacerbate the already excessive density on Valley Boulevard in terms of, even in terms of commerce, in terms of business, parking, traffic, noise. Um, uh, traffic violations, crime. Last Wednesday night, um, police pursued a suspect into my cul-de-sac. I spent four hours from two AM to five thirty-six AM with my house lit up by, and I'm calling police, I'm glad they're on the job. But this kind of thing is only gonna get worse the more we pack into Valley Boulevard. I, I live near Valley Boulevard. Okay, um, so I think policies that, that increase what's already on Valley Boulevard will make Valley Boulevard much more uh difficult to manage. And there comes a point where regions become unmanageable, unpolisable, uh unadministrable and so forth. There's, there are thresholds of human behavior. And so I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get there. I believe, I'm concerned that we're nearing that point. And by the way, they don't tend to stay in just one region. The people, you know, perps have cars. They travel into places where otherwise are crime-free. Okay, anyway, uh let me go on quickly. Um, density bonuses, I think, can be, are a double-edged sword. It can be good when they are used to create open space on a large project that take pressure off of the surrounding neighborhoods and so where they can be good when when they simply serve to increase more units and increase the density um itself without real, any real um benefit of open space, then, then the, the community pays for that in turn, and all the other densely-related negative side effects, crime, police calls, uh fire calls, uh crowded schools and so forth. Um, last thing, oh no, sorry, a couple more. Um, are you gonna say parking program? Oh, a good, one positive point that I was very happy to see is the emphasis on or renewed emphasis on schools as parks, as open spaces for the neighborhood community. Uh, uh, President Taliter, you grew up in San Gabriel, you probably went to some elementary school in the summertime for, you know, recreational programs and uh, I don't know if you, any of you knew uh George Katschnik, the director of San Gabriel Parks and Rec. Back then, his kids went to our schools too. My father went to high school with him. So when I became a Parks and Rec Commissioner in a neighborhood, you know, community, I asked him, you know, how come San Gabriel has all these really great rec programs and stuff? And he says, well, when I have, I get money to build a tennis court, I don't have any land to play it on. I go to the head of the school board, he says, I've got land but no money, so they, they work together. And the community benefited that for that. Uh, that's still there, apparently still goes on, but down south, it doesn't, doesn't seem to. Maybe I need to reach out to Darby a little bit. So I was happy to see that. Okay, um. Oh, the emphasis on code enforcement. On maintaining and enforcing the, the proposals, okay? Um, I don't, I've never met the code enforcement staff. I dare say that the emphasis on, let's just put it this way. If it's the, 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 the verbiage in the document said emphasis on reported driven code enforcement. I am supremely confident through personal experience, that is insufficient. Okay, I've, I've seen stuff left out on the parkway, a, a toilet sit there idle for two weeks and to remain there for three more weeks after I reported it. Okay, and I, don't get me started, cuz I, I'll stop myself. Anyway, uh, so I think that needs to be addressed in, in this document, because it's going forward. That's, this is what everything will be built on, if I, if I'm mistaken. Um. The, the, oh, and the other, the other biggie, in my opinion. We are going forward with this. Um, committing to build two thousand units at three-person-per-dwelling average for six thousand people added to our, where acknowledged in our document is a sewer infrastructure deficiency already. Even if you didn't have this document, if you drive the city, you see that big truck, it looks like a, it looks like a massive airport fuel tanker. But it's out there cleaning the sewers constantly because there's, there's constantly being jam and then one right side of city hall also. So we already have a deficiency. And yet we're committing to build on top of that deficiency. Segue this into the negative debt. Not a single mitigated effect. Every single one was zero effect. It defies Newton's laws of physics, that you could change anything in this universe as significantly as we're proposing and have zero effect on everything. Zero. Not a single one. And I would, I would submit, I, I don't know, I, I won't push this, but I would submit this is a mitigated negative debt. This is not a zero effect. There's, how, how can it be? We've all talked about how, how significant these changes are gonna affect us. Okay, so let me see, I think that's it. Um, yeah, there's a, I'll forget it. There's others I, I don't want to. So, so I would simply make, I will make a motion at this point, uh, uh, and let that we approve the document um sans the safe parking. I, I, you know, we could, I, I'm told we could address other things as we go forward and we, we come up with a new code and so forth. It says in the document that will address a new sewage treatment or not treatment of the sewage handling plan. Okay, but that's safe, that's safe parking thing. You don't want that next year, anything you care about, let me put it that way. So that was my, I, I, I'll, I'll make that motion. I'll move, pending any other comments, I'll move to approve with removal of the safe parking provision.
Okay, um, Norma or Jen, um, do you wanna weigh in on that? Is that a, is that a um something that the city council could take up as far as the safe parking? Um, what is our method as a commission to, to um be able to make that kind of recommendation?
Um, I'll jump in. Uh, as a commission, you can make a recommendation with some modifications, but um here I'll defer to Jen on, you know, that's what I was raising earlier, there, there'd have to be an alternative. Um, we can't just remove it without proposing an alternative that would meet the state mandate for addressing the low um income uh population. And so that, that's, that's why earlier I, I had asked, what was, what were the alternatives that were considered? Um, so maybe Jen, you can speak to that and like why we ended up landing here. Um, so maybe let's, let's hear from that and then that can determine how we ultimately move forward.
Thank you, Norma. Um, the safe parking program, as I mentioned, we, we did have some public res- uh, public support for that during the public review period on the draft housing element, so it did remain in place. That program language does say that the city will amend the zoning code to allow for safe parking programs in appropriate zones and subject to appropriate city permit and review processes. So it does leave some room for evaluation, uh assessment, determination of where safe parking may be appropriate um when that comes forward. So there is some flexibility there. Um, in terms of other al- alternates, um I think mainly we'd be looking at things like where the city can provide financial or in-kind support for the development of extremely low-income household or housing, um which could be, you know, partnering with nonprofit uh affordable housing developers. It could be through in-kind improvements. It could be for purchasing land, other types of partnerships that do facilitate the results in um actual housing production for extremely low-income housing. So um, those are some, some ideas.
Okay, thanks, Jen. Um, I wanna open this up to the other commissioners. Do you, do you uh agree with uh, with Mark that we should include that uh, that recommendation?
Um, Chair, I, I would chime in. Um, for the uh extremely low-income uh housing program, I have done some of them in the past, uh when there is a, a inclusionary housing ordinance, uh it would generate some kind of a public funds for the uh, for, for those programs. So uh in those funds, uh, uh, they, they, they typically will allocate a portion of to the extremely low uh housing uh development for nonprofit or for, uh, for, for developers. So if that is a, is an alternative way of uh, to, to provide the uh uh, extreme low uh income uh household supplies uh housing supplies, that might be one way to do it. Uh, if the, the uh inclusionary housing ordinance is, is part of this uh this, this, this plan. So I, I think that's one, to me, uh, it might be a way to, to, to deal with it, to deal with the requirements.
As an alternative?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, it's a, especially specifically dedicate a portion of the uh inclusionary housing uh ordinance, since that is generated through the new development. So any new development will generate, contribute to this, to this uh ordinance and the funds and if you can incorporate into that the use of the fund and then, then, then that could be a way of solving issues.
Okay, Mark?
I would submit there are already things in there. The, as the provisions for the SRO um so forth can be modified to address this. Um, I, I feel, I didn't, I tended not to focus so much on those because I I, I feel I didn't, I tended not to focus so much on those because I, I find them acceptable. But I, I think there are already things in there that could either already address. The issue in general or can be modified to address that. This, this is. I, I was, I was bewildered why it was in there. It makes sense for, you know, maybe a city like Arcadia or Pasadena or. Long Beach or something, but for a small essentially bedroom community like ours, the impact would be disproportionately. Adverse. Okay, we, we cannot assimilate the negative effects of a, of a. Entity like this in our city. We could not. There would be, yeah, so I'll leave it at that. So, so. I mean, if you, you can start extrapolating the, the effects. How many nights do they get to park there? What if it's a motorhome? Right? Okay, so they just, oh, night after night. They need a place to stay. It becomes a homeless camp. Right? And so forth. It's, I, I know, I, I stop myself because it gets a little threatening as a matter of fact.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Anybody else? Okay, so we, we have a motion on the table. Do, do we have a second to, to move this forward to the, to the city council? I'll go ahead and second. Jackie, you want to, want to give us a, a tally here?
Yes, Commissioner Juarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
You're on mute, Jerry.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Momdop Perkar?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lou?
Yes.
And Chairman Collet?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is five to zero, motion passed.
Okay, once again, Jen, thank your group. Your team did a fabulous job on this and it looks like you still have. Work ahead of you. So best of luck to you and, and also thank you, everybody. This is just a massive undertaking and, and a lot of people have put in, put in a lot of work on it and, and. Just know that, that we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you. Samantha and her team have been incredible. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Okay, we're going to move on to our item B and that is the 216 and 220 East Broadway. It's planning case number. TMAP, TMAP 21 dash 011, which is for a tentative tract map. And the applicant is EGL Associates. And Anthony, Associate Planner Anthony Alvarado is going to be heading this up tonight. Anthony?
Thank you, Chairman Collet. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair and Commissioners. Second public hearing item tonight before you, before you tonight is for a tentative tract map to propose the subdivision of, of a proposed 10 unit. Condominium development located at the addresses 216 to 220 East Broadway. Planning case number TMAP 21 dash 011. Slide number two, please. The project site is located on the south side of East Broadway between Saint Francis, Saint Francis Street to the east. And South Del Mar Avenue to the west. The project site is bordered by multifamily residences to the west, north and east of the project site. And commercial development located to the south along Augustino Road. Slide number three, please. The property is zoned R3 for multifamily residential and has a general land use designation of high density residential. Slide number four, please. This slide is an image of the proposed tentative tract map. The proposed tentative tract map would allow for all 10 units to be sold separately. Once the final map is approved by the city council. Slide number five, please. The proposed project complies with the R3 requirement for density lock coverage, setbacks, open space, parking, guest parking. Height. The, the density for the project allows for a maximum of 11 units. However, the applicant has brought that down to only proposing 10 units in order to better fit the project site. There was something that I noted, topographical error on my report. I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the commission where it shows the open space on the chart. It was listed in the report at 15,524 proposed when it was, that was a topographical mistake. It is actually 12,524. So that's correctly shown in this slide above. The project is proposing to have a two car garage on the ground floor for each of the 10 units. As well as four guest parking spaces that are located in the middle of the project site to serve the 10 units. Slide number six, please. The general plan land use designation is high density residential, which does allow for the multifamily. Residential development in area zone for R3. Additionally, the proposed project does meet the following goals of the general plan. Which is housing goal 2.1 and housing goal 2.2. This project, oh, sorry, slide number seven, please. This project is exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act per guideline section 15332. Class 32 for infill development. Slide number eight, please. Public noticing was required for tonight's meeting and it was done in the following ways. Mail notices were sent to property owners and tenants within a 500 foot radius of the subject site. Notice was posted at the property, which is shown on the slide above. As well as having a notice posted in the issue of the San Diego Sun on December 30th, 2021. Agendas for tonight's meeting were also posted at the following locations, City Hall, Post Office and the San Gabriel Public Library. Slide number nine, please. Subdivision Map Act, Section 66473 requires the city of San Gabriel. Requires that in order for the city of San Gabriel to deny approval of a tentative tract map, it would have to make the required findings for denial. However, based on this application, staff was unable to make any of the findings for denial. For this project. And slide number 10, please. And it is with that, that staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Gabriel, California. Approving planning case number TMAP 21 dash 011 or tentative tract map number 83378. At 216 to 220 East Broadway to allow for the development of a 10 unit condominium subdivision. Subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Additionally. Staff, because this project involves a demolition of existing dwelling units. Staff in the city attorney would like to add an additional condition of approval. Or consideration by the planning commission tonight, since this project could trigger replacement units per state law. That proposed condition of approval would read as follows. If any existing dwelling unit is proposed to be demolished, the applicant would comply with the replacement housing provisions. A government code, section 66300, letter D. And this is pertaining to. As I said, replacement units. This will conclude staff's presentation. Staff is available for any questions that the commission might have. I just wanted to let the commission know that we also have the project team, the applicant team on the call. I believe they have a representative. Representing the developer and an engineer who prepared the tentative map. Thank you.
Good. Chair, yeah, Chair, if I may, I, I just want to clarify for the, that last commission, that last condition that. Was mentioned by Anthony. That has to do with compliance with the Housing Crisis Act and Housing Accountability Act, which basically have provisions in place. That are intended to protect existing tenants from displacement and replacement related to affordable housing. So. It's not that this necessarily will be triggered, but it's just clarifying that if it is triggered, that the applicant will be required to comply with those provisions of the act.
Got it. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Okay, it's the applicant. Do you have a presentation or, or any comments that you'd like to make?
Good evening, Chair and members of the planning mission. This is Todd Bowden, representing the developer for the project. First of all, I'd like to thank staff for the comprehensive review on the project. We agree with the conditions of approval as proposed for the project and feel that it will be a great addition to the neighborhood and provide much needed housing. Our project meets and in most cases exceeds all of the zoning requirements, including but not limited to building setbacks, height, parking. Open and common space as well as density. I would like to thank staff again for working diligently with us throughout the application submittal process. And we feel that we have brought a quality and well thought out project in front of you this evening. I am available for questions as well as. The architect and engineer of record are both on the line if, if there's any detailed questions with regards to specifics of the project. And again, thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you very much, Todd. Appreciate that. Let's see, before we go to commissioner questions, do we have a, do we have any public comment, Jackie?
No, we did not receive any public comment for this item.
Okay, very good. Um, let's see, while we have the developer on the line here. Commissioners, do you have any, any comments or questions for the developer or, or for staff before we get into our, our discussion? No?
Chair, I do have a question. Is it related to Anthony's, the last added conditions to it as the replacement units? So I, the government, the government code relate to this matter, is that? To do with the rental units or is that to do with the ownership? Home ownership units?
Thank you, Vice Chair Lou. Actually. I would like to see if I could direct this question to city attorney, Norma. If you would be able to answer that.
I'm, I'm sorry, you were, you were asking that the government code reference with regard to replacement units? For rental?
Where it's, it's for both?
Yeah, it's intended to protect rental.
Rental units. So the, the question is to the developer, a, well, the, the, prior to the development. So there was a rental renters within this units. That is a, that's a trigger to this additional, additional conditions added to, to today. Is that correct? So previously, there was a renter residing in those ones.
Yeah, so, so we're, staff is working with the applicant to ensure that. They're looking back for the required time period according to, to the law and to ensure that. If the protection, the tenant right protection is triggered, that the developer complies with it.
So the compliance to this ordinance. Do we know what is the requirements is to provide a, a, a supplement or additionally. Or answer a rental units just to maintain the mental cause. So is there any, a, a specific?
Yeah, the protections that are in place have to do if something, if a unit is, is deemed as a protected unit. The types of requirements that that would trigger would be things like the tenant. Would have a right to stay in the unit for six months. So that it gives them a period of time to be able to find alternative housing. The policy is really designed to, to protect people from displacement essentially. And so that would be one example of. A right that would be triggered.
Prorated. Okay, thank you.
Okay, my question is to Mr. Bowden, is that last condition covered by your acceptance or were you familiar with that?
Yes, we, we were involved with discussion on that earlier today and we're fine with it. Just. For your information and, and the entire commission, the, the units are currently vacant and have been for approximately six to eight months. Under which the prior owner had them rented at market rate. So we're, we're comfortable with the, with the additional requirement or the additional condition.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Okay, at this point, we can, we can close the public hearing portion and open this up for commissioner discussion. Mark, do you want to lead us off?
Okay, you haven't had enough yet. Except for the comment that I, I'll probably make about almost every project like this, you know, I like to see. Other than 90, than flat surfaces and 90 degree angles in the architecture, other than that, this, I think this is the right project and the right location. So I, I'll be supportive.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Jingo?
I agree with Mark. I, I, I visit inside, I. Be honest with you, I, I felt, you know, I like what it is now, but hey, hey, you can, you can work with the development and all these. Properties have been developed to similar densities and I just felt, you know, when, when you look at the, what is in there, the space, the. Landscape, the, the, the open space, the airs, the. It's so compared to what's been developed in there as well, you know, that's, that's maybe just another product. Well, but we just talked about the housing ordinance and that's, that's area we. I feel we have to sacrifice in a way. Sacrifice the errors, the lives for densities. That's, that's something I. I hope there is a, a better way of doing that, even architecturally, I feel, you know, it could achieve better. Maybe I, I assign the density wisely and more. Pay more attention to the, the, the peoples, well, the buyers, the, a, a. Quality of life and also give the city a better, you know, architectural perspective. Against architecture in this one, just my general comments to, to this type of development. I usually call this development a shutdown development. Center as the driveways, that's, that's taking majority of the place and. Park on outside and then what's left to the, to the property line from buildings, that's very limited. Gardens, that's, that's all you got. So, or given the likely same. So, but if you look at the better. Examples there in the world, this is, there's other examples exist. So I, I just hope we can. There's some way we can, we can have better ones. I don't have anything against it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jingo. Jerry?
I had looked at the table that Anthony had put in and with the revision of the open space requirement. That it's 12,000 rather than 15,000. But. Project meets all the requirements. the project meets all the requirements of the zoning, of the zoning, all the zoning requirements. And it's rare that we see that in a project, and so that meant a lot to me. I believe the project will have to go to the Design Review Commission. So from, in terms of design issues, they're going to get a, they're going to get their say on behalf of the, of San Gabriel. And I think that's important to remember because of the, because of the size of the project. And all that being said, I'm in support of the project.
Very good, thank you, Jerry. Anok?
I think all the commissioners said pretty much what I was thinking. My only comment was the perimeter CMU wall on the west side kind of looked ugly. I think Anthony told me that this will get changed, or the owner said they were going to change this wall. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Munda Perkar. I did have a discussion with the, the developer, the applicant, earlier today. They acknowledged that they were okay, if anything needed to be repaired or replaced or anything like that, they were okay with that. Of course, it would require a separate, you know, submittal and permit for fences or walls. But maybe since we have Sir Todd Bowden on the line, he could just confirm that. And I think Todd, Commissioner Munda Perkar was referring to the existing wall on the western side of the property, it's an existing three-foot, two- or three-foot-high CMU wall. Can you just confirm that?
Yes, that's correct, and it will be repaired or replaced as necessary so that everything looks, you know, very good for the project.
All right, thank you so much, but other than that, I'm in support of this project.
Okay, thanks, Anok. Yeah, I tend to agree, the, the, the taking a look at the, at the, at the surrounding area, you know, size and scale, this is, this is not a new development that is going to be out of place, yeah, it's a, it's an R3 neighborhood, high-density residential. And I agree with, as Anok just said, that, you know, the, the requirements were met. And Jerry had mentioned this too, you know, with, with, with no negative findings and you know, that, that, that's a development that, that we can, that we can support. And also, you know, to kind of smooth off some of the rough edges, you know, the design review is going to take a good hard look at this. So that would, that would be much more in their purview. And, but from, from a land use standpoint and approving the tentative track map, I believe that is our responsibility. So I'm going to move to approve a resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Gabriel to adopt a resolution and approve planning case number key map twenty-one dash zero one one for a tentative track map, number eight-three-three-seven-eight at two sixteen and two twenty East Broadway, subject to the recommended conditions of approval, including one additional that was a late addition. So that's our motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Jackie?
Okay, Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamda Perkar?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lou?
Yes.
And Chair Clowitter?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is five to zero, motion period.
Okay, congratulations and good luck with your development.
Thank you all.
Great, okay, we're going to move on to item C, which is let's see, one zero four six South San Gabriel Boulevard, it's planning case number CUP twenty dash zero zero one. This is for a conditional use permit, and the applicant is Creative Design Associates. And our staff report is going to be presented, let's see, Samantha, is this you or Marlon tonight?
Yes, Chairman, this will be Marlon's presentation.
Okay, excellent. Marlon, you have the floor.
Good evening, Commissioners, the public hearing item before you tonight is for a conditional use permit to request a parking reduction for a, for a proposed new commercial office development located at ten forty-six South San Gabriel Boulevard, planning case number CUP twenty dash zero zero one. In addition, the applicant has also filed a precise plan of design application for the design of the project to be reviewed by the plant, excuse me, the Design Review Commission at a future meeting. Next slide, please. The project site is located on the northeast corner of South San Gabriel Boulevard and East Central Avenue. The project site is bordered by commercial uses to the north, south, and west, and a single-family residence to the east. The site is currently developed with a sixteen-hundred-and-two-square-foot single-family home. Next slide, please. As shown here, the property is zoned C3 Commercial and Limited Light Manufacturing. It has a general plan land use designation of general commercial. Next slide, please. Above, you'll see an image of the proposed site plan. The project site measures nine thousand square feet. The proposed project is for a three-story commercial office building measuring five thousand ninety-six square feet. The project site also includes bicycle parking under the stairway and fourteen vehicle parking spaces, including an ADA accessible space and two tandem spaces. More information on the proposed parking layout will be provided on a forthcoming slide. And next slide, please. The proposed project complies with the C3 Development Standards for Building Height, Floor Area Ratio, Setbacks, and Open Space. While the building's square footage is listed as five thousand ninety-six square feet, the floor area ratio for the project is point six-nine or six thousand two hundred and seventy-six square feet. This includes a permanently covered courtyard at the ground floor entrance, as well as a permanently covered patio on the third floor. These areas are not counted in the gross floor area of the building. Based on the gross floor area of five thousand ninety-six square feet, the project site requires seventeen parking spaces calculated at one space per three hundred square feet. The applicant is requesting a parking reduction CUP to provide three less spaces than required. Next slide, please. The project applicant is requesting a parking reduction pursuant to section one fifty-three point two two zero, section H three of the San Gabriel Municipal Code for Transit Accessibility, which states for any land use except residential, single unit, and duplex development, if any portion of the lot is located within one-quarter mile of a transit stop with regular scheduled service during the weekday hours of seven AM to nine AM and five PM and seven PM, the number of required spaces may be reduced by twenty percent of the normally required number of spaces. The image on the right identifies the nearest bus stop, which is a hundred and forty feet away, and is serviced by Route twenty of the Montebello Bus Lines with regular weekday service between five thirty AM and nine thirty PM, meeting the qualifications for this request. Next slide, please. In addition, the project applicant is proposing to have two tandem parking spaces, which may be permitted to satisfy the parking requirement if the standards shown on the left are met. The applicable standards have been included as conditions of approval in Exhibit One of Attachment A. In the, the standards that have been included in the conditions are A, that no more than two vehicles shall be placed behind one or the, one, one behind the other. B, that both spaces shall be assigned to a single dwelling unit or non-residential establishment. C, that tandem parking, to meet the required parking for non-residential uses, shall not exceed fifty percent of the total number of spaces. And tandem parking will only be allowed for non-residential uses if valet parking is used. It's a little hard to see on the site plan, but there is a valet kiosk shown on the plan. The, the other three would apply to residential uses. Next slide, please. The general plan land use designation for the site is general commercial. This land use designation allows all forms of retail, service, office, recreation, amusement, and other commercial businesses which provide goods and service for the local population and those businesses which are targeted towards visitors and commuters. Additionally, the proposed development meets land use goals one point six and environmental resource goal eight point three of the San Gabriel General Plan. Next slide, please. This project is exempt from the sequel requirements per guidelines, sections fifteen, three oh three, class three for for new construction and fifteen-three-three-two, class thirty-two for infill development. Next slide, please. A public hearing of this item was also noticed to property owners and tenants within a five-hundred-foot radius. Notice posted on the project site is shown here. The agenda was also posted at City Hall, the post office, and the public library, as well as the public hearing notice being advertised in the San Gabriel Sun on December twenty-nine. Next slide, please. With all this being said, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution of the planning commission of the city of San Gabriel, California, approving planning case number CUP twenty dash zero zero one for conditional use permit to allow parking reduction to the new three-story commercial building at ten forty-six South San Gabriel Boulevard, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation. The project representative and architect are on the call as well to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, great, thank you, Marlon. Okay, is the applicant available? And you have anything you would like to add to the staff report?
Good evening, Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Chairman Clowitter, members of the commission, my name is David Gutierrez, I'm with Platinum Connections. First and foremost, very happy New Year to each one of you. I am privileged this evening to represent the owners of this property in, with regard to this proposal, proposed project. Over the course of the last two and a half years, we have worked diligently with staff in trying to bring to the table a type of development that would provide the opportunity for the owner and the developer to create an opportunity for their residents for their CPA business. Currently, they are tenants at a location about half a block south on San Gabriel Boulevard, at which they've occupied for a number of years. It's been their dream to have their own location that they can enjoy continuing to provide CPA professional services to residents of the city of San Gabriel as well as businesses. They purchased this property a number of years ago. This property brings with it a number of challenges based on the size of the footprint, the allowable FAR potential for this property. Given that because of the size of the footprint, the parking had some challenges with providing adequate number of spaces in order to be able to allow this project to really pencil out. Staff has been extremely flexible in working with our development team, which includes the architect, CDA, which is Creative Design Associate. They are represented this evening by Caleb Wong, he is also on this call. The owners of the property are on this call. And we're hopeful that the commission takes a serious look at the hard work, the diligence that the development team has, has provided, and certainly the effort and time that staff has reciprocated in trying to provide guidance with bringing this project to the, to the point that we see it today. We further want to acknowledge that all of the conditions of approval have been shared with our development team and the, the team as well as ownership approve and agree with all of the conditions of approval. Once again, if the commission has any specific questions of the architect, Caleb Wong is available, myself, as well as ownership. Thank you, Chair Clowitter and members of the commission.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Good to hear you and see you again. Okay, Jackie, do we have any public comment?
We did not receive any public comment for this item.
Okay, very good. Okay, commissioners, did we have any questions for the applicant? While they're available.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So in this report, it states the current building is a sixteen-hundred-square-foot buildings. When I went to the site, the building looks lots bigger than sixteen-hundred square foot. A giant, a, a buildings in there, existing building, I'm talking about a, as a form of a residential buildings. Obviously bigger than a sixteen-hundred square foot, just, just my observations when I, when I see that. So then?
Jingbo, it, it looks like they're missing the second floor.
In the back. Yes.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, if?
Question? I, the, the report indicated this is going to be an office building. The applicant is going to use this whole office building as part of their, their business as CPAs, is that correct?
Well, I, I'm not quite sure which commissioner asked that question, this is Dave Gutierrez. So the, the proposal that's on the table is that the owner developer is intending on occupying the second and third floor for their CPA business. The first floor, which encompasses approximately seven hundred and eighty square feet, will be rented and or leased out to a, a tenant to be identified in the future. I guess my question will be now for staff, is there limitations on what type of businesses can go on the second, on the ground floor? Granted that the applicant is going to use their office as a CK building, CK firm, basically off the trip gen, is there limitations on what, you know, seventeen spaces can provide?
So the, the uses that would be able to occupy that first floor, given the parking as proposed, would only be office uses and other types of uses that require less parking or equal parking to, to an office. Nothing greater, for example, a restaurant or a medical office would not be allowed to occupy the space.
Okay, so is that usually indicated in our condition and use that, you know, it has, whichever business does come in, we'll have that limitation, we'll have to follow those limitations of parking?
That's actually something staff reviews when we receive an application for a business license. We ensure that the proposed use will have adequate parking based on, not only their, their proposed use, but all existing uses in the building.
Okay, great, great, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you for your question.
All right, very good. Okay, if there's no other questions, we're going to close the, the public comment, open it up for commissioner discussion. Let me jump in on this one, this is a little different because we're just looking at a CUP here for a parking requirement. This is, there, there's really, you know, this isn't a condo project, this isn't anything else, this is to be reviewed by buildings, department staff. And quick question though, is there, I believe in, in Marlon, you said that, that there, there is a design review approval that has to go through for this?
That's correct, yes, the applicant has filed a precise plan of design application that will be scheduled following this meeting.
Okay, very good. All right. Well, as far as I'm concerned with, with every, all the requirements that have been, been met here, I don't have an, an issue with this. Jingbo, any words for us? Jingo, any words for us?
Yeah. Yeah, I I don't have issues with the use of the proposed new development. And I I think the reduction of the parkings is is due to the the developers' a desire to to build up to that. Square footage. And I feel sad to see the big building gone, that is a pretty significant. Craftsman style the building and pretty well intact to me. And I don't know if we have ever had a historic, a resource survey of this building has anything have done that buildings. But it's in the it is in the commercial strip. And I just just appear to me was a was a very, a very significant to me. I'm not not saying it's not allowed to do that, but it just I want to look into it, is there anything in the survey done to this building? For the size of the building, building in the twenties, scale of the buildings, it's it's high significant size of the building. As my only concerns, other than that, I very much say to this.
Yeah, I agree with you there, that that is a significant, what would you call that, a craftsman building? Yeah, and boy, it's a shame to lose those, but that's a throwback to an earlier time when you when you had residential. You know, buildings on a on a commercial street. You know, who who knows what San Gabriel Boulevard looked like when that was built? Yeah, that's 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 an old one, that's going back quite a ways.
Well, when I look at the the these type of buildings in San Gabriel, you don't see much the size of buildings, it's one of the larger ones. And you see that this kind of buildings across the the county, some of the buildings that have been preserved with effort to relocate somewhere else where a desirable place. Being repurposed for something else. But yeah, this is my my regret to the building going to be lost. And we don't have a a historic resource review process or even a survey available for those areas. And a staff, Samantha.
Yes Vice Chair, I can I I can start and then Marlon, you can add on, but as part of the preliminary review of the project. The plans were routed to the city architect just for some preliminary review and comments. And as part of that, as part of the city architect team, there is also an architectural historian on their team. So Marlon, if you can maybe provide some of the the just the preliminary comments that they provided during the review.
Unfortunately, I don't have that in front of me right now, but I can certainly pull it up or on it now.
While while Marlon looks that up in as a follow-up to the question in regards to a survey. Currently in that area, a survey has not been done. An RFP to provide resource survey services will be a part of a future project that is going to be presented to the Historic Preservation Cultural Resource Commission. So that has been drafted, so that is something that the city council has allocated funding for that the city will be bored with. But in the meantime, for that for that particular property, a survey has not been done. And then Marlon, I don't know if you've been able to locate comments?
Yeah, I I did pull up a few rounds of comments that were provided by the city architect. Unfortunately, they stuck to the design of the proposed building with no discussion on the existing home.
Yeah, it's just a from a historic point of view, that this is such a large building in a larger than normal building in San Gabriel. If you look back to, I would see some history, a background research and what is this building? Why has this building, this big, this this scale, this sort of significant looking buildings? That's a that's my instinct when I see the building. Just. And I I hate to see it gone, it's just very sad.
Okay.
And some of the buildings can be repurposed for office use, just in my in my view of that, it has so much characters, so many. But just looking, I don't know what is the story behind. Yeah, I'm that, as a only concern I have.
Okay, thanks Jingo, Jerry? Any comments?
Well, I think the project is good. I hope that the accounting firm has people who ride the bus. Since they're asking for a parking reduction because of the transit location nearby, so I hope there are people who use it. And overall, I think I think the the. Project is suitable and I am okay with the parking reduction. Cause it's it's a small parking reduction and again, hopefully people are using transit.
Okay, thanks Jerry, Anub?
I agree with my fellow commissioners, you know, that building looks really nice and a craftsman property look very, you know. Historical, not historical, but and it was a sign of the times prior to what I remember. Also, I agree with Jerry's comment that, you know, hopefully, you know, as the building goes into use, people use transit as it becomes available as well as carpooling. So, you know, if it's within, but also knowing that staff will also be reviewing what business will come in on the first floor and that it will fit it within the parameters stated in our CUP. It gives me confidence that, you know, we're we're definitely, you know, moving a project that's, you know. Will benefit the city in the future, thank you.
Thanks Anub, Mark?
Well, I agree with. We should use points you're well taken, I haven't really even considered that, you know, the architectural value of the existing structure and so forth. I was more focused on. You know, as I stated before. Parking, parking isn't just where the vehicles are, it's the effects. And you put them on the street and it affects things, it affects streets maybe. So you've got dirty streets and so forth, so on and so forth, I won't get into the details of that. But there are multiple kind of domino effects of putting more cars on the street. And with our ADU policy now that we've just enacted and all other zoning, there's going to be more and more and more cars on the street. My my observation and my experience, direct experience with these small little developments like this, little smaller commercial developments. In commercial zones adjacent to our ones, is that I can point out one, I won't I won't finger the actual address. But they have a valet and the valet make sure all the customers get in and all the employees park in the neighborhood. So every day from eight to five, the people adjacent to this 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 business can't park in front of their own house, okay? Okay, there are worse things in the world, but my point is, it's not just three cars. They already got two tandem places, which means it's already stretching the parking. Coes in terms of tandem, they're going to hire a, okay, they say they're going to hire a valet to manage two tandem spaces? Okay, okay fine, take them at their word, but. What I see is, what if it was parked a code? Well, that's one part for three hundred square feet, that means they lose a floor. That's really what we're talking about, do they get an extra floor in the building? Or do the citizens of San Gabriel put up with more cars on the street? That's the way I see it. I don't know if the if the if the applicant would like to address that, what if what if you didn't get this permit? Would, you know, but what I would really like to do, honestly, what I really like to do is, I like to park, I like to park all some of these places on the property. If that were possible, I'd be more inclined to give a variance to some other. Standard and put all the cars on the property than to let to say. I was putting on the street, residents won't mind.
Thank you, just Chair, if we're going to address things after public comment had closed, we should take a vote to reopen public comment.
Okay, that's okay then, I will draw my my question. But that's that's why I mean, I my former father-in-law is a real estate developer, that's really what we're talking about. A floor on the on the project versus cars on the street. So I respect everyone else's perspective and and, you know, and comments made. At some point I have to have to back up my my comments about parking, you know, with a vote and so forth, so. I'm still not sure if this time, but this will be it.
Okay, thanks Mark, anybody else? Is that good? No more comments? Okay, and we have closed the public the portion. I'm going to go ahead and and move to adopt a resolution of the planning commission approving planning case CUP twenty dash zero zero one for conditional use permit to allow parking reduction. On a three-story commercial building at ten forty-six South San Gabriel Boulevard, subject to the attached recommended conditions of approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Jackie?
Okay, Commissioner Lawrence?
You're muted, Mark.
Do respect my fellow commissioners and their opinions, no.
Commissioner Momdiperkar?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Chair Liu?
No.
And Chairman Pluiter?
I'm going to vote yes.
Okay, the vote is three yes and two no's, motion pass.
Okay, thank you very much, congratulations to the applicant and good luck with your development.
Thank you Chair, appreciate your your comments as well as everybody else's. And certainly continue to work with staff to bring in this project to fruition, have a good evening.
Okay. Thanks Dave. Okay, let's see, moving along here. Let's see, Samantha, do you have any any updates or comments or anything from the city for us?
No update, just want to wish the planning commission a happy new year.
Well, and likewise to you and and your staff, we we appreciate all you do. Okay, are there any commissioner comments, anything that you'd like to to bring up before we close the meeting?
I wish everybody a happy new year too.
All right, thank you Jingo. Same to you. All right, okay, we are going to adjourn this meeting at eight thirty-four. And to the regular meeting of the planning commission on Monday, February fourteenth. And. Pending everything probably right here, so. Well, it seemed like we were so close last month and then. A very broke out, so here we are and anyway, I just I wish everybody a happy new year, be safe, wear a mask, do the right thing. And let's get through this thing and we'll be all back together at City Hall here soon, I would hope. All right, thank you, good night.
Good night.